Let's start with the. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everybody, and thank you for your patience for a few minutes delayed. It's five minutes after five. It is the monthly meeting of the planning board. Today is Tuesday, September twenty fourth. We have a truncated planning board today. It's Granya coming to my left, and Drew Harvey to my right, and myself, and Liz Vale is our attorney on Zoom, and John Ellsworth is here helping with Nelson Pope Borges. Of course, Doris is here. So. Number, first item on the agenda is the minutes, and we only just got the minutes today, so I'm going to accept the motion to consider considering the minutes next month.
It's removed.
Okay, all those in favor?
Okay.
So that'll be that'll be on the agenda for next month. That's about the chance to look at them. Those are the minutes from last month. Decision section. We have, the first decision was two oh one Main Street. The attorney for the applicant, that's John Germain Memorial Library, the attorney has requested that we adjourn to the October meeting. So I need a motion to adjourn.
It's removed.
Thank you. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. So that will be October twenty two. Thank you, Doris. The second decision item is number two, which is seventy six and eighty two Hempstead Street. Do you want to come up to the podium? You're good. You're good. Set us down. So I was talking to attorney for the applicant. We have a finding determination written up. I don't know if you folks have had a chance to look at it, but we've been talking about this, and we just we just need to adopt the resolution to accept it. But maybe John Ellsworth can talk us through a little bit if you'd like to, John.
Just briefly define what's on the resolution for. It's a resolution on a lot by modifications for the two existing lots that residential dwellings and accessory structures. The street address, as the chairman mentioned, is seventy six and eighty two Hempstead Street. It's in the R twenty zoning district and the title of what has an overlay, historic overlay district. It's classified as a type two action of the seeker, so no seeker review is required per the regulations. There's a series of final facts and agency refer that they have been discussed in the prior meeting. And as part of the approval, there are certain conditions, and these include the preparation and submission of a final subdivision plaque, which has a whole included on the drawing. The subdivision map should be stamped and approved by the Suffolk County Department of Health Services and signed by the planning board chair. And then for legal documents, what's required is free draft deeds with recent bounds, a title certification for each of the two lots with a flat line modification, submission of mortgage consent if that applicable, village attorney approval of legal documents. And then the deeds can be accorded with the Suffolk County Clerk's Office and remitted to the Village of St. Harbor for each of the two parcels. And then the final thing is that the final plaque should be filed with the Suffolk Suffolk County Clerk. And that that needs to happen for the expiration of the signature for the approval that the Board of Sound client approve it tonight.
Good, good. Please step forward. Any comments? Or otherwise, I'll accept the motion to accept it, to adopt it.
Motion to adopt.
Okay, thank you, Drew.
Second.
Thank you, Granya. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that is adopted. Doris, do you have something for me to sign, or shall I? I'll meet you afterwards if you'd like while we do that. Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we'll move on to the next section, which is, excuse me, the work session. Number one is Page Main, Page Restaurant, Page LLC. They, the attorney for the applicant has requested adjournment until October twenty two as well. So I'll accept a motion to adjourn, please.
It's removed.
Thank you, Granya.
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor.
Aye.
So that is October twenty two. That brings us to number two, which is five nine five Realty Corp, Inc., at thirty one Madison Street. And the I suppose the idea, as is written here, is to consider scheduling application for pre-submission public hearing conference. Hello?
Before Captain Matt Wescry, attorney for the applicant.
Thank you. Nice to be here. Nice to have you here. So you, this goes back, we have some paperwork going back to twenty twenty one. So I don't know if you folks, have you folks seen that, the Nelson Pope and Borges paperwork?
Yes.
The memorandum, I guess. Okay. Did you have anything specific to talk about tonight, other than just setting up the pre-submission?
Pre-submission, and I understand, you know, we're also going to need to go to the ZBA for variance for parking. Just kind of wanted to discuss timing with the board, the village attorney, if we should be submitting these concurrently, or we should proceed for pre-submission and then submit to ZBA or.
It's usually helpful to do pre-submission, and then it outlines all the variances you could possibly need, which is helpful just to get that perspective. So I'd recommend you adopt a resolution setting the pre-submission hearing for this matter.
Right, right. And you're looking, I assume you're looking to do that, you know, there is a timeframe, maybe next month, or is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, or unless noticing requirement.
There are noticing requirements, yeah.
So maybe for November, so that we're not rushing for the notice requirement.
That's fine. That's fine. Okay, so then, well, I think Liz might need just a motion to to set a date for the pre-submission conference, very public hearing. Yeah. For November, so.
What's that? What's the date, November?
Good question. I've got mine. If you look.
Fourth Tuesday.
It'd be the twenty sixth of November. So two days before Thanksgiving.
You're right.
Okay, so.
Second.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? So you have a pre-submission. So don't don't neglect to do the posting and so forth.
Thanks, Eric. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you very much. While we're on the subject of the dates of November, at the end of the meeting, we'll talk about the December
December.
date and make sure we're all on board for the right date. Don't let me forget that, because I will. All right, we're going to move on to the next section, which is part five, public hearings. We'll have one public hearing tonight. I don't know if anyone's, is anyone on Zoom tonight?
I was in Green's hands.
Okay, okay, good. That's one need now.
On delicious film birds.
Okay, that's fine. Okay. Well, there will not be a pre-submission public hearing on twenty five Meadow Street if anyone's here for that. That that has, that is not happening. There will be discussion of that particular item later on this this evening. But there will be a public hearing for two oh three Madison, and we will start that now. So I know the attorney is here. Denise Shone for for that application, so come on up.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Doris, I am to meet her, and I'm the attorney for the applicant, and I'm appearing here tonight with Anthony Vermandewal, the architect, also for the applicant, and the owner and the applicant, also present in that in our audience as well. As you correctly stated, we're here for a pre-submission conference hearing. We have noticed the property and submitted our app even mailing to Doris for review by Ms. Vale. And we're also here to address a few of the issues that were raised astutely in the memorandum drafted by Nelson Pope and Borges. Just to give the board sort of the general sense of what we're talking about, this is the property that is on the corner of Germain and Madison that used to have the carved wood ducks in the window.
Decoys.
Decoys.
Decoys. They were pretty good in their hand. They're quite famous now. And after it went out of business, that that industry going in different forms. There were lots of different people that owned the property that used it as a business use. There is a question in the memorandum as to whether or not we also continue the business use or the abandonment, because so I did want to hand up two things just for the record. One is our photographic evidence of how we've been using the gallery. This is a proposal to make this a gallery by the clean and home lane. So not that the gallery that you would go to and sort of purchase property off the wall. You would make an appointment and bruise what's there and then speak to Ms. Monica about whether or not what she has is what you need, or whether she would like or you'd like to be there. The existing certificate of occupancy on the property was issued in August of twenty twenty three, and that does substantiate the factor to apartments, one upstairs, one down, and one ground level store use. But just to run that in for the record itself. This should, I guess, I need two copies. I apologize. I'm going to hand one copy up here.
Right.
All of you to look at. But of course, it's in your in your documentation anyway.
Sure, sure.
So this has been continued to use, and the fact that we've made an allocation to modify the use also shows that we have an intent to change the use. And one of the issues in abandonment is intent. And here, there's no intent or ban this detail, it's upstairs. But it will be limited to gallery only. So by appointment, gallery purchases only, not shows, not anything that you can think about that would have to do with, you know, crowding crowds. This is a very, very innocuous, low occupancy space. To be that as it may, we have put together a full site that Google for it, a site modification for it, showing the correction of parking spaces as the plan. If we sat down, sat down with him in the beginning of this process and made sure that we were adding enough parking, had enough grandfather parking, and that's all, you've got to fit all of the stops on the site. This will Doris, you can't use the screen. Is that correct? It's okay if you can. It's okay if you can't. Great picture of the the old version. I did. So there's a great picture that we have from that means a hundred years ago, that shows how this building used to look. And you see sort of what I would consider to be an older Italian man standing on the front porch, wearing an apron, and it looks like maybe it was a deli or something, and there's two stories right in the front. So maybe.
Who is the old Madison market?
Thank you. That's.
Oh, really?
Yeah. That was the original location of the mass market.
Thus the name.
Yes, and that's exactly, and that's Mr. Vermandewal speaking. Thank you for that. So this is not going to be a radical change from what we've seen in the very long past. It'll actually be bringing the building back into performance with what it used to look like way back then. And it will mirror the property across the street. If you can imagine that. I know we've had that in for planning board quite a few times through Mr. Downs changing use, because it's a non-performing use. So he's come in every time he's needed to change it from, let's say, retail office, vice versa.
Right.
So same kind of building. That building is a little bit larger, a little bit fuller. We have been to the ARB. The ARB, quite astonishingly, said that the zoning board should grant us whatever relief is needed in order to restore the building.
Good.
But really, really strongly about it, that it be brought back to its original heyday, so to speak. And we went to the zoning board as well, and they took those comments, and frankly, they agreed with them. So they sent us back here, which is the proper procedure to get to start lead agency process. We have filled out a long form EAF and submitted it for the file, so I know NPB will have to review that.
Yep.
But then, if you're inclined, you can take lead agency status or defer it to another one of the boards. The boards that we have involved are the planning board, the zoning board, and the harbor committee. I'm sorry, not.
ARB.
The ARB. The harbor committee is only involved insofar as CLWRP.
That's right.
And getting signed off on that.
Consistency, yeah.
So sure, I covered all of these issues that were in here. I think I did. I think I covered all of the issues raised by NPB, unless you can think of any other questions that you want to answer, that you want to answer along here, or unless Anthony remembers something I can forget that I forgot to mention. It was in the though. But that was really it. The substantive comments were, had the use been abandoned, it definitely has not.
Right.
And, you know, getting us started on the right secret process.
Right.
And we submitted that long form EAF to get us started on that as well.
Have, and you said you went to the zoning board. Have you established what zoning variances you would need yet, or?
Yes, we have a list from them of what variances we would need. So we know, we had to modify them a bit. They changed over time, and you know, it's kind of like a work in progress. So for the most part, they actually went down in number and size from the original application. And none of the variances, the zoning board seemed to immediately were problematic for them. They were just, it's a function of where the building is, and it's two streets, and it's literally
That's right.
as you go around the corner. Our most important concern, of course, is safety and welfare. We know that the village has been talking a lot about that crosswalk, that crosses right between them, you know, because of stool.
Yes.
And we're perfectly happy to work with them on, you know, whatever solution they come up with. But as far as use, I don't think that this use will endanger any of the children in any way, because like I said, it's appointment only. It's not going to happen before seven thirty AM when they go to school, and it probably won't happen at four PM when they're leaving. But there also won't be a lick of cars in and out of that facility.
Right.
Be more hard at times.
Right, right.
And the facade work would just scaffoldly and
Yes.
rerouted for pedestrian.
If I could do that, sure. These are some interesting, these are the historic photographs that I did, that kind of like when it was the last year. Oh, yeah. Not that they're properly designed, but you'll get a very good view of what we're trying to create.
Stay here. So this is, that's basically the same location.
Yeah.
There was this second story here. This is kind of just sketched over where that second story is.
Yeah.
So this is interesting, because we have sort of ample documentary evidence of what this building looked like originally, what its dimensions were and things like that. We could pretty much follow without having to really depart at all from.
It's convenient, right? That's great.
Not insubstantial.
A gas pump outside.
This is.
It's really, it's cool. It's cool looking. Do you think it would require a rerouting of the pedestrian crosswalk? Because I I think the students cross from here predominantly. I mean, just while the building's work is going on.
Oh, you mean a temporary?
Yeah, a temporary solution.
Possibility. I don't, I don't mind at all reaching out to each chief or whomever you think is the best person to sort of make a recommendation about whether we need any sort of rerouting of school traffic while the street
Well, I assume there'd be, I think you might have mentioned scaffolding as well, so.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
One could walk under the scaffolding at certain times, right?
Yes, yes. You can have buildings, all of those buildings can require school a full site, so you can get an idea of how the layout of the building
Right.
and the problem with work. Sorry, I just realized we're going to be on screen.
That's okay.
But this is the layout. So
Yeah.
We've got this is Madison. Main, you've got your crosswalk here. This is the proposed second story, so that's just adding space for the second story apartment and an office for the gallery. And then this is the existing unfinished basement under here. This is where the existing parking is. We made sort of a turnaround, so people don't have to back out onto
Right.
Germain, Germain, thank you. And then we put the other parking on the other side of Madison. So this is how we get the whole, the nine parking spots that we need. We were trying to avoid a parking variance, if at all possible.
I was going to ask you about the parking, because I want to make sure that one was not backing out onto Germain Street. And are we are we confident that 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 those arcs, those those radii are proper for for that?
Engineer reviewed them, and he said, yes, but I'm perfectly happy to take comments from NPB if they have it. If they have any disputes, we'll we'll make.
I'm sure they will look at it. I'm quite confident they will look at that, you know.
Correct turnaround.
Knowing it, knowing Nelson Pope, yeah.
We definitely don't want a dangerous situation. So we want people to be able to turn around.
And I assume one of the, I think I'm seeing one of those is an ADA.
Handicapped.
Yep.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
And we have asked, added handicap accessibility for the building as well, so there won't be any trouble in and out of the building either. No, you know, stairs. It'll be a ramp.
That will be shown, obviously, on the
And it's all on here. It's so detailed. You won't be able to see it right now.
Right.
It's a good review.
Right.
But when you guys take a deep dive, you'll see it.
Is it is it the property owner's job to maintain the sidewalk out front, even though the property line
It is not.
in this part of village?
It's not. It's interesting. No, you're right. The only, the obligation she does have is clearing the snow.
Clearing snow, yes.
We have a village ordinance that says that, you know, reducing property owners need to keep the snow clear from their sidewalks. But other than that, as far as maintenance, unfortunately, the planning board can't require off-site maintenance of anything, but you can ask.
Yeah, I would, I would just say my suggestion would be, while you're undergoing this kind of massive renovation, the sidewalk does need to be improved on this corner.
Okay, which, do you mean both sides?
Yeah, on the corner. Yeah.
This piece here.
I see. So as it goes around.
Please come on. Sure, please.
So I just want to let you know that
Oh, state your name.
State your name.
Monica, oh, sorry.
Hi.
Hi, nice to meet you. So just want to let you know that I've been maintaining this corner from this part to this part, actually, all the way here. We didn't cut in the grass here where the pole is, so removing the snow, putting salt on during the winter, and my neighbors can vouch for it.
They've been giving little waves.
And thank you. Yeah, and I've been just basically sleeping instead of blowing, because it's too loud.
Right, good.
So I've been maintaining this whole corner here.
Great.
Yeah.
Great.
No matter what the scene is, because I like it clean.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Monica.
This is the overlay.
Yes, yeah.
This is kind of an image.
It is an image. It makes you wonder how this
Yes.
This burnt down. Oh, burnt down, okay.
So it burned out in nineteen fifty, especially. So I found charred wood that fell down from ceiling in the gallery part, so I actually have it.
Have some of that.
It's pretty cool.
That's cool.
So I'm going to save it, yeah. So that's their reason that there's no second.
That's probably right. There's a fire in the fifties.
Fifty, fifty.
Um, they got rid of the second floor, and she's exactly right, partially the second floor, and she's exactly right. There's charred wood.
And there's staircase going upstairs to the apartment, which we had a, one of the actually, just we had the pictures. I actually have the subfloor, the real floor. So all the signs are there of the second floor being there before. I think the owners maybe didn't have money to restore it, and they just left it alone.
Right.
Right. So she's left, so we're back to former delivery, yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
And and they had just replaced sidewalks on the opposite side of the street.
That's right.
Was that project, yeah.
That's right.
Done. I mean, this is, this is the thoroughfare for the students to get to Mash Park.
You're absolutely right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why we're being so sensitive to it and are open to any
Well, I think the bigger picture, what Granya is pointing at, is that this really is an important sort of thoroughfare.
Absolutely.
And so building, it looks like it's at the lot line, the building, more or less.
Yeah, pretty much.
So to both of my colleagues' points, digging, any any work will will impact the sidewalk.
The sidewalk.
It will, it will break the sidewalk. It will, it will block the people from walking there. So that's going to be a key thing to plan about going forward.
And Anthony will probably know, like, in the actual construction process, you're going to have to
Yeah.
clean up that sidewalk, possibly cut out a portion of it.
Yeah, and and rewrap pedestrian crossing.
My suggestion would be like, let's have a real plan to replace it maybe in its entirety, so it's all, you know, the same surface.
And maybe that's negotiated with with the village, with the building inspector. I don't know. I've not yet.
Yep, no, you're exactly right. And I appreciate you pointing that out to me. I didn't even think of that, but you're right. There's not enough room to get around that building to even maintain it without going onto the sidewalk.
Right.
So so adding a second floor would definitely necessitate us using the sidewalk.
Yeah, that'll be an important part of the of the thinking about how are you going to do the construction.
And I may just, I may need to work with Liz on maybe an indemnification agreement or some sort of like temporary license to use that space.
Right.
But I'll I'll talk to that. I'll talk with her about that outside the meeting, so I don't take up your time.
Okay, okay. And I think you might be going down as well. I spoke briefly with the architect about this. So you're you might be going down, which is also a possibility of some disturbance. I don't know.
Oh, going down below grade?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, for the basement I'm talking about.
Yes, yes.
I don't know where it will be, but, okay.
Got it.
Okay. Maybe you have some things to say, John Ellsworth.
Oh.
Just one small thing.
Yes.
Certainly, we've already submitted and the data information in the I quickly looked over the EAF.
Yes.
This is the
Oh, okay.
Yes, but we're, there are some long steam, some considerations.
Okay. Okay.
We'll try to get this, as we say, please, for that step to be the issue. To the one they
Okay.
I'm really, but I guess the corrections to the
Absolutely. There isn't entirely possible. There were some questions that I just couldn't answer without talking to you.
Right, right.
So that's great. Thank you for offering to help.
So just to be clear, are we looking for a change of use from from retail to?
It's really not. It's actually the same use. Just to add, for example, there's one place you can find
More specific.
Decoys, this, which is semi.
Okay.
But I know that our technical regulation is very specific in the sense that it breaks down details of different uses. So I guess technically you could call it a change of use, because it moves from one part of the chart to the other. But the overall use is the same, which is retail and apartment.
Maybe Liz Vale will have a insight about that.
Sure.
Yeah. I don't see her there, but she's probably there somewhere.
I'm here. I just messed with my video. Sorry.
That's okay. That's okay. As long as you can hear us, that's good.
I can hear you.
Small comment, John, on the, John Ellsworth, on the memorandum that was written up about this, it refers to apartment number one and number two. I think they might be backwards. I Um, I think they might be backwards, I I I, um, in the way it's written. It reads that apartment number two is on two different floors, but I think apartment number one's on two different floors, perhaps.
I think that's correct.
Yeah.
Um, um, and just for my sake of understanding, are the apartments layouts on the ground floor in the same, the same layouts? Um, or they, and not, I mean layouts, I mean square footage or something. I, one of them is, one of them is small, put it that way.
Yeah.
Yes, one is small, one I think is just under six hundred square feet.
Right.
And then the other one's a little larger, I think it's about twelve hundred square feet.
Right.
Um, there's the layout is slightly different from the original apartments, but overall the same. One in the original construction of the building, one of the apartments was always smaller and the other one was there.
Okay.
Very true. And I did forget to mention for the record, just that they were making and selling candles after the decoys. So like, we have switched from like different retail elements.
Yeah.
That we've been selling, that they've been selling out of the property. We have all the receipts, um. I don't think it'll get to that point, I've known once NPBS and Liz have a chance to read, but I've submitted, the the use will probably not be an issue.
Okay, okay. Um. This is a public meeting, maybe there are some comments from the public, I'm not sure. Is there anyone in the room or anyone online who wants to have a safety thing? Sir, please come on up. Just, I'll need your name and address. Please.
Donovan McLaughair, two hundred Madison Street. How are you?
Oh, good, thanks for being here.
Living across the street. Uh, and I can confirm that uh the property's been well maintained and um she's out there washing the windows on the ladder by herself and taking care of plants. Which I hope, you know, to tell you, having lived in there twenty years, probably seem done. Not, so commence, kudos to her to make that effort.
Good.
I see that there's live documents sent over in the ministry, we didn't feel them. Um, I'm not sure if the traffic study is being entertained, is that the case or not?
We just haven't gotten that part yet, we're still in the secret process.
Understood. Um, I will share that, I think a, if we were doing a special project in a more urban environment, when we currently live in here, we're up island, there might be the thought of making the driveway and the parking area be contiguous, so. Um, but not necessarily need to go. Uh, and we could go from Madison through your Jermaine.
All the way.
On the back of the house. Um, I encourage you to take that under advisement.
Mm-hmm.
Also, I see one of your roles is to looking into the future, and I think we all can collectively say that we are in some type of crisis regarding housing in the village of St. Harper. And as you're planning ahead within the parking requirements, um, though it's not currently compliant by the user, my understanding is that the second floor of the addition would be an office.
Oh, apartment.
No, it's a storage, I'm sorry. Storage and my conference room.
There's a kind of conference room.
So it's basically my storage, and I have a little office upstairs and a little bathroom.
And so future owners may wanna consider that uh being an apartment. And likely take that under advisement, not sure how the code addresses uh office to residential conversions, because I don't think that's been the current pressure within the village of St. Harper. It's the opposite, that was the pressure for many years. Um, but just keep that in the back of your mind, that these buildings last a long time, the uses do evolve, and they're currently, we tend to address those current concerns by modifying, by modifying the, actually, um, projects, and keep that in your back of your mind.
Thank you.
That's all.
That's, that's very helpful, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um. Um, I'll, I'll say a comment to piggyback on what you just said. I I, when I was looking at this, one of my concerns was, or one of the things I was thinking about was the parking. Um, and I was looking at where the proposed um IA system would be and thinking, oh, well, maybe maybe you wouldn't have to have two curb cuts, or maybe it could be cleaner, and maybe you'd need to plan that ahead where the, where the system is, so it's just, just think that through a little bit.
Okay.
If you would.
Absolutely, um, and I just wanted, uh, Monica just pointed out to me that we, we couldn't have a third apartment um because health department, like we didn't have enough.
Septic.
We already have, yeah.
So um, we do have health department approval for what we're applying for, but we couldn't get any other.
More density.
Density.
Yeah.
Right, right. Um, anyone else in the public, uh, from the book who wants to speak? Please come on up. I'll just need your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Sipina Streeter, fifteen Grant Street.
Hello there.
Um, my question is just, I'm very familiar with building, because I used to go over and chat with Mr. Hand and with the Vcos. Um, we've been under construction on Madison relentlessly the past couple of years. And my question is, since I live on Grant Street, I have to use Madison most of the time. And there's this big house, uh, it's two by one, but we still know finished, another one's proposed, sales. Um, is the construction of trucks, are they gonna, and I assume there will be trucks of the builders. Will they park on the Madison side and block up Madison again, or will it be on Jermaine?
That's a good question, and that's something that I think the applicant will have to think about. Um, perhaps, um, you, you, well, that.
Long way to go before we get to that, though.
Yeah, we're not there yet, but we, that's a good thing to bring up, as a, as a.
We've been under, you know, us to live there and to the city, it was, it was intense the last couple of years. It's not gonna subside, so it's just something.
Well, your point's a good one, that 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 building, that property's on on that corner, and you can't park, obviously, right at the corner.
But Jermaine, it has a bigger parking, which I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, and there's also maybe during construction, there's maybe onsite parking that one could do, that can arrange. But that's something that the uh, the the applicant and the the professionals working for the applicant can think through. Thank you, that's, that's helpful.
That's great, and a gallery was there.
Wonderful, good, thank you, thank you for coming in. Anyone else in the, in the audience who would like to speak?
Oh, can I just ask her?
You certainly can, come on, come up to the podium if you would, please.
Sorry, okay, so I already thought about the parking. Uh, everybody then will come in, uh, the trade, let's say framing, will be there one day, they're going to park. I'm gonna have everything set up, a construction uh parking onsite. So everything will be happening onsite, there'll be nobody actually parking on the street. I, I, I know that, because I can see that, you know, how many cars I'll have. I have a schedule that uh will allow me to know how many cars are coming each day. And um so, right now, for example, people park around me to unblock my driveway, so I understand your concern. But I can assure you that I have a plan, that everybody will be arranged um and parked on the site. So it's plenty of space for them.
You sound highly organized.
Don't say, I already.
That's wonderful, that's good.
It's always.
That's a compliment, that's a compliment, that's a good thing.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
That'll be no problem.
Good, I think your, I think your neighbors will be very happy to hear that.
I, 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 I know how it is when I'm trying to cut grass or something, you know, if they can get in. But okay, so that's it, so that's the line to you.
Good, thank you, thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else in the audience or online? There, I don't know who's online, Doris, but um. Maybe there's.
No hands.
No hands? Okay. Um, actually, uh. Yeah, so, no, please come up, come on up.
No, just to follow up on that, we will definitely have a construction order called.
I'm sure, I'm sure you are, yeah.
After we're done, see, you know, that'll be part of the secret process.
For sure, yeah. Yeah.
But uh, if there aren't any, I don't know if there's any other questions, um.
You folks, and Liz, are you okay with where we are?
Yeah, you just have to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Yeah, um, uh, I'm not even sure we made a motion to open the public hearing, but but.
Right.
I'm realizing that, we're so, that's what I just realized, but um.
Yes. And and who who would you work with if you had to reroute the pedestrian traffic on a, on a temporary basis? I mean, who would be the?
Private police chief.
Would be the Yard Lee.
Yard Lee and the police chief, I believe.
Yeah.
Drake, and talk to both of them, because I know they're, they've been deeply involved in trying to fix that issue.
Right, and that spot.
And you know, and they, I think they can get creative with with some sort of um.
Temporary crossing.
Temporary things too, to sort of delineate maybe better.
Yeah.
Um, where where people need to walk to be safe. Um, so I'm, I I trust that they, that's probably how it would be done, that's my guess.
I think so, I I'm not an engineer, but that sounds like the right plan.
Right, right.
I I also would notify them, if you haven't already, of the plan.
Yeah.
Because they are redoing sidewalks and they are on a schedule.
Okay.
So I don't know if it's on their list or or not, but.
No, I haven't submitted any.
They don't wanna be pouring cement while you guys are putting up scaffolding.
It's a good suggestion.
Yeah, no, I'll submit the whole application to the Yard Lee and to the chief, so that they're aware.
Yeah. Good, good. Um, and the superintendent of schools might be more.
Yeah, I I, I think that would be a very good idea.
Yeah, just because that is.
Yeah.
Where this, you know, the the kids going to the the ball fields are going.
And and it's possible that, you know, Marsden's going under construction at the same time, so that's all in the path.
Yep, and that, that happens to be my client, so I can, I can coordinate that.
Okay, wonderful. Um, okay, thank you. Any more questions from anybody? Um, in that case, we will close the public hearing, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Thank you, Drew, thank you, all those in favor of closing the public hearing.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, um, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, you as well. Okay, so we're gonna move on, so we, so uh, we're gonna move now, we're not doing the public hearing for twenty five Meadow Street, but we will move on to the discussion item, and that will be twenty five Meadow Street. Um, so, uh, there's some gentleman here, it looks like, for, to represent that application. Hello, sir, just, I'll need your name and uh address.
David Hurst from Madisonhurst, Pauline Choron, two forty one Pannagl Road, East Houston.
Welcome.
Yeah.
Just for the benefit of anyone listening or in the room, you you folks were here, I don't know, a few months ago, maybe, a couple of months ago, they're just discussing this as well.
Yes, um, but then, thank you, chairman, members of the board, but thank Nelson Pope as well, Ms. Ivan in particular. Uh, you know, the thorough review of our prior submission, which has led to uh pretty significant changes uh that was being proposed, their guidance. So I passed up to you, it's a revised survey, as well as a site plan. Um, the structure, there's existing two-story residences that are on the property originally being proposed to be relocated and repurposed uh currently, and that was raised by Seifman as whether or not that was necessary, prudent to be there. Uh, so that's being eliminated, I know a lot to go through other boards for that as well. Um, but it's, in doing that, it directly has allowed us to address some of the other concerns raised by Ms. Ivan.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, if you see on the on the survey, the prior proposed building was mostly along the western and northern boundaries. Uh, and it has been kind of turned, so it's along the front of Meadow Street. Um, which beats a front yard setback, meets a side yard setback. Um, the rear yard setback is the one uh to the western property line, based on discussions with building apartment, that's a forty-foot setback, which we don't need. Uh, there's an existing structure there that also is not compliant with that setback. So we would be still require relief from that, but it's only approximately four hundred and sixty square feet um of actual area within that setback. Uh, once you deduct the existing structure that's already in that setback, so it's really not a significant, nearly a significant of an increase as the prior proposal.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I've also provided you with a, a written run-through of our response to Ms. Ivan's memorandum. Um, there, again, in revising the layout, uh, we're also looking to reduce the number of units from fourteen to twelve, uh, which then changes the parking calculations as well. Relocating, it also provides us more room to provide parking. So we're proposing to provide fourteen spaces on the property.
Yeah.
Um, which still would require three and a half uh parking variance from the zoning board, as opposed to, we were asked uh seven to begin with.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so there's really a lot of changes here.
Hmm.
Um, part of that is the relocating, relocate the parking, relocating the building. Um, so, and complying, we were, were complying with coverage, we're still complying with coverage. Um, and reducing enough to meet the variances by this new design. So maybe fill through this here. So we think in in this revised plan, we were trying to reach a reasonable compromise with the board and the villagers, uh, you know, my applicant needs here. Their coverage was responding. Um, depending on the mix of affordable units versus market rate units, which is something that we're gonna have to, to get really into with the zoning board, uh, more so than this board. That determines if there's requirements for parking variances, lot coverage per unit variances um as well, so that's something that's still, uh, you know, gonna require some further uh provision and discussion.
Right.
Other ways. So if, based on the size of the units proposed, if they were affordable, then those numbers don't matter. The, you know, they they're not applicable for the minimum apartment size or the minimum lot area per apartment for the affordable accessory apartments.
Right.
Right, so it's the, the change in the setbacks and being more compliant with the rear yard. And minimum apartment size, again, depending on the dispersion between affordable and market rate. Um, visual clearance at the intersection, that's also addressed in this revised plan. Um, by limiting that existing residence and rotating this building. Um, and it's also the, uh, if you see on the survey, the, the village has kind of paved over significant corner of.
I was gonna ask you about that.
My property.
Yeah, yeah, that was kind of you to let the village do that, yeah.
So far, so good, so we'll have to uh have some discussions, uh, further discussions on that. Um, I know again, no, that's not, uh, not, not exactly your purview, so.
Right, right. So if I read this correctly, where the asphalt is, starts now, is where your building corner would be.
Correct.
Right, okay.
Which is still, if you can see, almost fifteen feet into the property, fourteen point two, so.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
The village is taking some liberties with the uh pavement there.
Yeah, yeah. Well.
And I know there's, there's a few um notes from the Seifman that are, you know, we're gonna have to come forward with them and provide them in response to now this plan, so.
Right.
With the prior plan, it uh, that's part of the reason why we didn't wanna move forward tonight with a public hearing.
Yeah.
Is because of the level of changes that our client has undertaken in response to the planning memo. Which most of those concerns are stuff that is easily, you know, inadvisable, like we have a a more solid plan. Rain, lighting, solar panel layout.
Sure.
Um, just at this stage, it's just not really prudent to have proceeded all that when everything's kind of in flux here. Um, ADA compliance is provided. Compliance with the waterfront, although like different standards, which most of them aren't really applicable, because this isn't a waterfront lot, but the ones that are, we would be compliant with screening, dumpster location, uh, whatnot.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Um. Like pedestrian access is shown, the ADA compliance. Like pedestrian access is shown, the ADA compliance, the handicap parking spot. Um, again, once we further, get further along in the solar panel layout, um, because there, there may be a shadow issue from Main Street, uh, from those buildings they're creating shading during the winter from a low angle.
I'm sorry, so what, what are you saying?
The cinema building.
Yes.
Um, that may affect the solar panels on our roof.
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay, I'm just understood, understood.
The number and layout.
That, yeah, that would be important, yeah. Where is the ADA? I'm not quite seeing it yet.
Um, on the site plan?
Yeah, uh.
Marked in blue.
This.
Right here, here's the handicap parking space and the walkway.
Okay.
The elevator.
Okay, so that walkway, it, it doubles as sort of pedestrian access.
Yes, and you have pedestrian access here as well.
Oh, I see, okay, now I'm understanding better, thank you, appreciate that. Okay.
The parking underneath the structure was raised, that's been discussed with the fire marshal preliminarily. Um, it is, from what we understand, doable. Just, again, we need further plans for them to come up with what their requirements will be. I assume some sort of fire suppression system.
Right.
Or something of that nature.
Right.
In order to address that, but it is, it is doable from what I understand.
Right, right. And if, if I remember the, the, uh, the Nelson Pope memorandum properly or correctly, there's also questions about the size of the, the parking spaces.
Yeah.
And where, and where the poles would be, the, the sort of support, the building.
Those supports are shown, they are in red on that plan.
Okay.
Um, and the spaces, uh, have been laid out at nine by twenty per Nelson Pope's recommendation.
Okay.
And again, by relocating and removing that of the building, there's additional parking that's provided that you can see on the site plan.
Yes.
Kind of on an angle in the corner there as well.
Over here?
Uh, yes.
Right, right.
Do, do you have a current proposed split between, I mean, I know you said you'll be working with zoning on the split between affordable and market rate?
Right now, the idea would be fifty fifty.
Okay.
Um, but again, that's subject to.
Subject to the parking variances.
Yeah, parking. You know, the, the, the need for the affordable housing is, you know, is pretty strong here, so that's, um, providing what we can while still maintaining the affordability of the, the actual construction and, you know, long-term costs is uh, where that balance point needs to.
I, I don't know if you're at this point yet, but are you prepared to talk about how the affordable housing would be maintained in perpetuity? Um, you know, how do we, how do we, what's the mechanism, what's the process by which it's managed as affordable housing? Um, and, and would the market rate apartments be rental or, or sold, or what? At some point, we're, we're gonna wanna know more about what, what your vision is, I suppose. That was in the, that was in the memorandum as well.
The affordable housing units are kind of regulated by the code for how, um, they're to be allocated in the, the town, town code as well for the price of those and what that amount is, but my understanding is that would be, you know, in, in perpetuity.
Okay. Can I bring up an issue? I'm, 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 I'm curious about, I'm not sure how this works. Um, I don't see a sidewalk here, um, and I'm not sure how that would, how that would be, how that works out, and, and John Ellsworth, you can, you, you, that's something you can, if you have thoughts or comments, you can bring it, but.
We do, there is ten feet between us and the roadway, so there would be room for that.
Uh, Mike Trunzo.
Oh, Mike.
But the question is liability of having a public sidewalk on a private property. So whether or not we work something out with the village, I mean, I'd like to see a sidewalk.
Sure, I think.
So liability may be an issue.
I think it's required. I believe, if I remember correctly, we've done that before with, with some other buildings on, uh, Long Island Avenue.
Okay.
Um, uh, where we utilized pri- private, yeah, yeah, I don't know how they worked out the liability, but, um.
Well, we probably give you an ease to put the sidewalk.
Something like that.
The village and the village would.
Something like that, yeah.
Okay, just wondering.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
And, and the last sheet it talks about, the affordable housing requirement, but we're just gonna follow silent town guidelines for that.
Okay.
And then we've got an easy place on the building for affordable apartments. And, uh, no bulk of funding is expected, so.
No bulk of funding, okay.
Just on that.
Okay.
And that's about it.
Okay, that's in the, in the paperwork, you, you, you just handed me, right? Good, I'll, I'll be sure to look at that.
And those, uh, designs of the number sections, these are numbered in responsive to that.
Very kind of you, thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Mr. Trunzo, he's, uh.
Thank you, Mr. Trunzo.
Very thorough.
Very thorough applicants tonight, I like, I like that, everyone's very organized. Okay.
So I know there's a lot to digest, and I know we don't have a board either to go, be going through it, but, uh.
Look, but I think the, the general, the general, what, what I'm hearing from you is that you, you heard our comments a couple of months ago. You've downs, you've, you've reduced the impact somewhat by downscaling, either with the number of units or, uh, and the number of parking spaces therefore needed. Um, you've shifted the building, which was also a comment that was made by a, a committee member who was not with us here anymore, uh, uh, Ron Reed, to, to, because the building would be more, be cited in a way which is more, uh, appropriate for a walkable village, rather than looking at a parking lot.
Uh, it's funny you bring that up, we have, there's, we have pictures here, um, I'm sure if anybody's going back there. Um, at least in my mind, the idea that this is the, the walkable corridor back there is, is kind of, uh, not the reality of it, I mean, it's the backs of buildings and stark walls, it's, it's not really.
Well, that's.
When you think about walkable village, you're, you're thinking Main Street, not.
Oh, Mike Trunzo again, um, you know, she considers it a suburban walkway, and I'm going, suburban? I don't think so.
Well.
More industrial.
It, it is, I, I.
Yeah, I mean, with parking lots and.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna disagree with you on that. The, in terms of planning, though, and, and the gentleman earlier was talking about, like, think ahead, um, twenty, twenty-five years, thirty years. The idea is to have that area, at, at least the way it's planned with the office district, that's the office district, that there could be offices there, there could be buildings, people could live there, and they're going to walk to Shaboni's, they're going to, you know, uh, push a stroller with a kid and go to the movies, or something like that, so.
And, and part of that is, I think, what we're looking at would be affordable units as well, is that, that's the expectation.
Right.
Is that this, these are gonna be people who are living there in the village, eating, shopping, walking.
Maybe working, maybe working in, in the, the village restaurants or other places. Um, so, um, yeah, it doesn't look like a walkable place now, but we're hoping to change that a little bit and make it a little bit nicer.
Well, I think, I think we're, uh, we'd be a nice part of that.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. That, that, that's why I was thinking about sidewalks and such. Um, and, um, yeah, and, and how it looks, how it looks is important as well, you know, um, so that was, that was the idea behind it. Do you folks have any, any other comments?
I mean, if, should we make a comment that we're, you know, what's the next step here for these guys? It's just kind of, we're, we're bouncing comments off on this new plan? Like, you, Liz, Bill, like, are we, should we just comment on what we're seeing here tonight to give these guys some direction?
Yeah, I mean, that, that's what they're looking for, is just some basic feedback, but if they just submitted new information, um, that might be hard for you to do. That being said, they can always submit, you know, they don't need fully engineered plans to submit for a pre-submission conference. And if these are the plans they wanna go with, then you could set a public hearing for a pre-submission conference, and then they could get the actual real pre-submission report, which would direct them as to exactly what variances they need and how many, and then they would go to Z B A, and you could coordinate for CECA and proceed that way, but it's, it's up to the applicant. This is just for a work session, so I don't know. They would have to submit these plans as, um, what they wanna proceed with, uh, for pre-submission.
Right, and I, I know we also owe, uh, you know, NEAF part one as well.
Yeah.
To keep that going in the right direction, so, you know, I have submitted the copies that you guys have tonight, we'll be providing more as well as, you know, digital copies to meet the, uh, requirements for, uh, submission.
Yeah.
And then, you know, like to hear back from you guys as well as Nelson Pope.
Yeah, I, I, well, personally, I, I haven't, obviously, you just hand us some, some things, and, and you're very kind to give us, I'd like to read them. Um, and I think they'll be informative, um, so I'd like to look, I, when I'm a little bit more knowledgeable, I think I can speak a little bit more, with more knowledge. Um, but I like the way you're going in term, in the sense of you've, you've downscaled. I was concerned about, you know, and it's still an issue, it's, it's still a dense, a dense, uh, uh, applicant, you know, there's quite a few people uh, and, and apartments in that spot, but, uh, you made it smaller, that's going in the right direction. Um, and you've shifted the building, which I think will be a proper, you've removed that built, the other building, which makes, allows for that to happen. There might be some, you know, um, dissent about that in other quarters, but, um, I see the purpose of, I see why you're doing it.
And it was non-conforming?
It, it was non-conforming, um, it's also, it's not really contributing, while it's all, pretty much the entire village is historic history. Uh, this really is not a contributing building, and it had been renovated numerous times in the past, so.
It, it.
But is it designated historically contributing?
It's.
The building?
It's.
I think it is.
Contributing, yeah.
It's contributing.
When you look to the book, you know, the ones that actually have special features of history, it'll parabola, this one just says, you know, two-story house, blah, 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 and nothing else.
Yeah.
It's pretty simple.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, my, that would be my initial comment, whether there's a paragraph or not on it, I've seen many buildings get torn down that are historically contributing, and it was probably a bad decision by the village at that time.
That would be.
My, my initial reaction wouldn't be, let's make it work by getting rid of the historically contributing building onsite.
But we're not, we're not giving up on it yet.
Yeah.
We're just gonna see whether it can be moved.
Yeah.
Structure it is and all that, so.
Cause I think there will be members of the public that, that it doesn't work if you have to remove the historically contributing building in order to do the plan. It would be a non-start, um, for certain people.
And A or B, maybe, yeah.
Um, well, and perhaps, and I heard you mentioned, perhaps it can be moved elsewhere, perhaps as a way to mitigate that loss by making the loss less complete, but moving elsewhere. I know, I know some people don't want that either, but it's something considered.
Family homes, and so we have some.
It's your, exactly.
Yeah.
Your, your mom's, your mom's home?
Grandfather.
Ah, wow.
He came home from middle, and seven people were raised in that house.
Wow.
That sounds like some history to me.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 I think it's contributing.
Well, I just think it's, it either is or it isn't, right?
Yeah.
So if it is, there's, there's a process with, you know, taking it, tearing it down, right? It's, you're not just allowed to tear it down, so.
Right, right. Okay, well, um, thank you for, thank you for coming in, I, I don't know what else to say about it right now, because I.
I, 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 we appreciate that, and, uh, you know, understand that there wouldn't be, you know, full comment on something you've had for five minutes, so.
Yeah, yeah, okay, good, well, um, it, you know, come back at some point, or, and, or, and like, like, uh, our attorney said, you can back in for a pre-submission as well. Thank you, folks. I think we're at the end of our agenda. Am I right about that?
Very true.
One of the things we need to speak about is, is the, the date of, of the, for December meeting, I believe, um, it was floated a little while ago through emails, uh, the eighteenth or nineteenth of Wednesday, or Thursday of December. Um, I would prefer, I think the, the Wednesday would be nicer. I believe you said, uh, that the, this room was available for both of those. Wednesday. I prefer Wednesday, but let me see what, what.
That's fine with me.
And, uh, Liz, do you have?
Yeah, Wednesday's better, yep.
Okay.
I think the earlier is better.
Yeah, agreed. Wednes- uh, Wednesday, December eighteenth.
Wednesday, December eighteenth.
Yeah, let's, let's make it Wednesday, December eighteenth, and this, you can, if, if, if something has happened in the me, in, in the past few weeks where the room's not.
I'm Mike.
Tell us now. Good? Um, John, it's okay with you folks, you think?
Thanks, man.
Okay, all right, I think we can adjourn. I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
All votes in favor, aye, unanimous. Um, thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Good night, good night, Liz, thank you.
You're welcome. Have a nice evening.
Well, you, you as well, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, thanks, thank you very much.